Our first item of business tonight is oral communications. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No.
Nope. Any comments from the public? These are for items, or if you wish to comment, items that are not on the agenda. Any comments from the public? For items that are not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda.
Right.
Okay. Commissioner Ruth and other commission members, I'm Sandy Erickson. I live on Cabrillo Street in Capitola. And a few years ago, I was really surprised to find out that you could keep chickens in the city limits of Capitola.
Think we got your letter.
And that, I kept looking for chickens, and then I realized it's under "fowl." Okay, so, and when I called several folks in the city and asked, "Can you keep chickens in Capitola?" The answer was, "No, you can't keep chickens." And we were all looking for chickens, and that's not how it is. Well, so, I realized that, because I noticed it, number one, the people directly behind me had chickens. And then, as I walked my dog, there are a number of other people in the neighborhood who have chickens. And they kept them in the backyard. Well, a few months ago, one of my neighbors relocated his chicken coop from the backyard to the front yard. And the ordinance about the animals, just quickly read the first line in case y'all are not as familiar with it, but you may have looked, that "animals shall be kept in a manner so as not to offend or endanger any neighbor." And it talks about fowls, and they can't quack, and they can't crow. Now, I did have some neighbors who were several blocks over who had a rooster for a while. So I don't know who talked about that. But anyway, I find this chicken coop in the front yard to be quite offensive. And quite frankly, I find it offensive that nobody else seems, that the people with the coop don't understand why people would be offended at having a chicken coop in the front yard. And in talking to the city, it seems that the only thing about the chicken coop is if it meets the codes for little buildings in front of a, in the front of a residence, okay? So it doesn't matter what you do with it, I guess. So there's a couple things that I think I would like somebody to look at. Number one, what kind of structure is appropriate to put up in the front of your house that is not part of your house? Because, you know, we regulate fences, we regulate all kinds of other things, so, you know, what kind of structure can people just willy-nilly stick up in their front yard? And the second thing that I think we really ought to consider, and that is, if people are allowed to keep four chickens, then I could have 16 chickens abutting my backyard. And that's a lot of chickens, just to be affecting one yard. If I put four behind, that would be 20 chickens. Now, we all know what a, y'all may or may not know that I'm a nurse, okay? So I pay a lot of attention to germs. I know Gail's in the restaurant business. She does not want salmonella in her kitchen. It would be bad for her business. And this many chi, you know, if the seagulls are a problem, and they're indigenous to here, we bring in a lot of farm, we bring chickens in, all the chicken drippings and everything else pose a health hazard. The other thing the chickens do is they attract skunks, and raccoons, and rats, okay? Rats most famously from the great plague. And it seems to me recently there was an animal found to be carrying the tick that carries the plague. So I think it's a, it's a real health hazard. I think as long as people thought it was cute, and not many people would be doing it, it was sort of sloughed off. But the reality is, if everybody in Capitola is allowed to erect a chicken coop in their front yard, how are y'all gonna feel when they put chicken coops up in front of the Six Sisters? If they were so inclined to do it? So I really think, I would appreciate if somebody would look into the ordinances, number one, about it is appropriate to keep chickens in the front yard, in a coop, and secondly, exactly what kind of structures are appropriate for the front yard of a residence. So that's what I wanted to talk about, and whatever, whatever can be done. We all live too close together here for some of this stuff. And if you can only have two dogs, you know, two large dogs in a backyard can create as much problems as if you locked two humans up back there and didn't allow them to come in the house and use the facilities. And people are notorious for not cleaning up behind their dogs on the street, and they also don't clean up behind, in their backyards, they just let it go. And so, so there are all kinds of issues that come in with this and living as close together as we do. I would appreciate it if somebody looked into it. Thank you.
Ms. Erickson, because it's an oral communication, it's not scheduled on the agenda, we can't discuss it?
I know you can't discuss it.
Yeah, but we can, we can have the staff report back to us on this?
I'm, I'm, that's what I would appreciate.
We can give you a report now if you want.
Okay.
We are aware of the situation with the chicken coop in the front yard. Letter has been sent to the residents, giving them a certain amount of time to either deal with the chicken coop, or the city's going to start code enforcement action. We do regulate structures that go in the front yard. I think you're all aware that you can have an accessory structure on any lot that's less than 80 square feet and less than eight feet tall, as long as it is in the side or rear yards. This particular structure, they already have one structure on their property, and the chicken coop would be a second accessory structure. So they would need to get a permit for that, and then it would be up to the planning commission to ultimately determine where it could be. Our ordinance regulating animals says that you can have four, and it lists a number of different kinds of animals at your home. You can have four dogs, you can have four cats, you can have four chickens, you can have two chickens and two cats, you can, you know, however you want to set it up. But the maximum number of animals that you can have is four. And there is one exception with dogs, after they're over, I believe it's four months old, you can only have two dogs. But we are working with the property owners and have sent them a letter.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Erickson, does that answer your question?
Well, that answered my question. If I could just add one thing, this residence originally faced Cabrillo Street, and when they-
Is their front yard.
And as far as the people, the residents on Cabrillo Street think, that's their front yard.
Yeah, according to the zoning regulations, that is their front yard.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure everybody, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Susan. Okay, we'll move on. Any other public comments for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go to commission comments.
I have one. I just have one. And I think at the last meeting, I brought up a concern about, in a restaurant environment, having an outdoor cooking patio. And I know that we're still working on getting a real answer, but I'm not really certain how you start the process of making sure that in our general plan update, that we come up with some kind of a, a specific worded code that says, if you're going to have an outdoor patio cooking at a restaurant, it requires a permit. Because then it wouldn't be silent, and anybody who wanted to do it would have to come through and get a permit first. Okay, thank you.
So would that be a permit with a, with a public hearing attached to it? Because if you come in and get a permit, generally, the public won't know about it. So it would have to be a public hearing permit type of permit.
It would be part of your conditional use permit. It would be one of the-
You'd have to come back for a conditional use permit review or addition or whatever.
Right, or amend the one that you have for your restaurant.
Okay, great.
Okay, any other comments?
I do, I have one.
Okay.
I was happy to see that the Orthodontic Office on 41st Avenue painted while I was away, and their sign is beautiful. I love the artwork on the sign. I did get a complaint from one resident about the brightness of the sign, and I inquired as to the ability for that type of sign to be turned down.
Which sign, I'm sorry?
The Orthodontic Office, it's in the old World Savings Building.
Okay.
I asked Mayor Terminy, who's in that business, and he said, "That's a lead sign, and it's, you don't have to change the bulbs, as with other signs. You can turn the brightness up or down on those within the sign itself." And so we might want to consider, you know, brightness of signs like that. I know that it's not abutting any residence, residence, and probably isn't really bothering anybody, but, you know, if anybody else mentions it, we might ask them to turn it down.
And we did learn going through the process with Target, you know, they put diffusers on their sign to lower the brightness of those signs. So they can, you know, I believe within a certain range, regulate the brightness of the sign. So the easiest thing might be for us to put a condition on the sign saying that, you know, if, we'll evaluate the brightness of the sign and if-
We have the ability to ask you to regulate the-
Yes.
The brightness. Yeah, great. So if we hear anybody else mentioning that, we might want to ask them to do it. Yeah, apparently, it's pretty simple to do.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Staff comments?
No.
None? Okay. Then our first action item is the approval of minutes from the, our October 4th meeting. Any additions or corrections? Gail?
I am noted in the approval of the minutes 3A as having suggested modified construction hours, but I wasn't at that meeting. So it couldn't have been me.
I believe Juan, you were at that meeting?
I really-
Chairperson Grace made a correction to the-
Oh, this is the September 6th meeting. You're right, I was at that one. All right, good, thanks.
Mentally still in Italy.
Yeah. I was sure I was there on October 4th.
I would move approval of the minutes.
Is there a second? I have a motion to second to approve of the minutes submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have no items on the consent calendar tonight, so we'll move to public hearings. Public hearings are for the public to have an opportunity to speak on the agenda items. And the procedure is staff presentation, then a public discussion, planning commission comments, and we'll close the public portion after that and bring it back to the planning commission for a decision. So we have the staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening. The applicant is proposing an addition to an existing single, single-family, one-story single-family house at 1, at 500 Pine Street. It's in the RMM Multiple Family Residential Zoning District. The property is a 13,875 square foot lot. It slopes up from the street and is within a developed neighborhood, both single-family and multifamily. The parcel currently contains a 1,850 square foot house in addition to an 840 square foot detached accessory structure to the rear of the property, so you can kind of see what the existing property looks like. Should mention that the pool and kind of the pool structure, or the structure next to the pool, if you went by the property, notice is gone. So all of that between the house and that front fence is, is all gone now, so. And that is actually the subject of where, where they're proposing the addition. So here's a street view. You can see there's kind of a wraparound gravel driveway, and then there's the retaining wall, and then the shrubs and the fence that exist today. So here's the site plan showing the existing house, the detached structure in the rear, and then the proposed addition to the front. Here's a little closer look at it. So the addition will include a 408 square foot lanai, as well as a 1,250 square foot recreation room, which also includes a garage structure, basically a one-car garage that's connected via breezeway. The recreation room includes a wet bar, a bathroom, and hot tub, as well as an attached shopping garage that opens up to the front driveway. Here's some elevations, can kind of see what it would look like. Since it is on a slope, you can see that it's, all the, all the home is one story, but it kind of steps down the hill toward the street. Here's another street view. And what I was gonna mention is that there are some front yard improvements also being proposed as part of this. The existing retaining wall that you see there is being proposed to be replaced with a concrete wall, same location, same height. They're going to pave the circular driveway, which is currently kind of a gravel, and there's gonna be new landscaping put in, in the front yard as well. They are proposing the, I believe it's a redwood tree there that you see right in the front. The applicant is proposing to remove it, they'd like to remove it. We did have a discussion in Architectural Insight Review Committee meeting where we were, it came up in the discussion mainly because whether we would require them to put in sidewalk. It's not in a sidewalk exempt area, so, but if you notice now, up and down the street, there isn't any existing sidewalk down the street at this time. So the tree being fairly healthy and being kind of a significant tree along that street, the discussion in the Ark Insight Committee was to save the tree and, and have them record a deferred sidewalk agreement, which would basically require them to put in sidewalk at some time in the future, whenever the city decides to put sidewalk along that neighborhood, or if the tree were to ever come out for any reason. So that's something that the planning commission probably would want to discuss, is whether or not they would support removal of the tree as the applicant is requesting. Here's kind of a street elevation. The previous elevation kind of showed what the structure's gonna look like. Here's a little better look at what you're actually gonna see from the street, because you're not gonna see a lot of the structure, because it'll be behind that existing wall. So as I mentioned, based on discussion at the Architectural and Sight Review Committee, as recommended, the existing redwood tree be retained and a deferred sidewalk agreement be recorded. That condition has been added and is in the staff report. And it's recommended that the planning commission approve the application based on the conditions and findings provided. Available for any questions.
Any questions?
I have one question about the trees. In the drawings, there are two trees, and in the staff report, it said that the landscape architect commented that if the tree gets removed, then two native trees go in. Are those the two native trees that are pictured there? Since they're, the plan is requesting removal of the redwood tree?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
No. Because I think the plan was based on, well, I'll let the applicant speak to that.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Nope. Okay, is the applicant present, or applicant's representative?
Both are here. I'm Richard Emi. Glad to see you again. When we first went through Ark Insight, we knew that this was a, not a sidewalk exempt, and I think the public works indicated we needed to put a sidewalk in. In addition, the redwood tree is already growing over the curb. And my concern, being a designer, is it's gonna continue to do that, and you're gonna affect the drainage pattern. So yes, it's unfortunate, it's right in that location. It is what's known to me as a sucker tree. It came up from some roots of the other redwood trees and just appeared. In hindsight, probably should have been trimmed. That having been said, yes, that little tiny tree that's there would come out if the redwood tree is removed, and we have proposed to some sort of native tree, like an oak, or would be put in that left-hand side. The project is two-faced, if you look at your elevations that you have. The first is, and it's already in for a building permit, we originally called it a lanai. For tax purposes, when we get the building permit, it's gonna be called a covered porch. I don't know whether they'll tax it different or not, but we want to keep the taxes down. Lanai sounds expensive, I think a covered porch doesn't. So that is already in for a building permit, but cannot be issued until we get this permit. He had to go through the city process, and therefore, his plan overall was to build this recreation room, where we were, we initially thought it would maybe an accessory dwelling unit. However, have found that if we did that, one, it needs to be sprinkled, and, to make a long story short, it would be about $20,000 in additional fees to SoCal Water District to sprinkle a water meter, a separate meter. And that just isn't what he wants to do at this moment, so we're just building a large area and a garage for an electric car off to the side. Materials will be identical to as the house, and colors will be identical. And the reason for the different roof pitches is so that out of the covered porch, you can look over and still get the vista of the downhill side. I'll answer any questions you have. The owner is here, and if you have questions, he'll answer it, but we've talked about the project. I think our issue is the tree. If it needs to stay, we will, but I think it's, in time, we'll need to come out. And now's the time to address that, I think.
I have a question of the applicant. Can you go a little bit further into the drainage issue that you thought would, would start to occur with the tree remaining? When you say drainage issue, what do you mean?
Well, once it starts to raise the curb and gutter, it's already growing over the curb. It will grow into the gutter, and you're gonna have water flow on the-
I got you.
It's stopped. And it's raising it so that you're gonna have water ponding, and that makes street maintenance problems. So that's the issue. It's not near the curb, it's going over the curb already.
I have one more question, and I hate to beat a dead horse, but I need to understand. On the plans on A3, there are two trees that are located-
Oops, sorry.
That's right, that are located back here where this little red tree is, but there are two of them. And I just want to make sure I understand, those are, these two trees I'm looking at here are not replacements for that redwood tree?
Yes, they are.
They are replacements?
They were, if we remove the redwood tree, we have to replace two other trees.
Those are the 25-gallon box trees.
And it was requested they be a native-type tree.
Okay, and that, and those are them?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. They were added at the last-
And that existing tree is a plum tree?
Yeah, and that will come out when you put the native trees.
And you don't need anything for that, because it's a fruit tree.
No, that's not a protected tree.
Okay, any other questions? Nope? Okay, thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? This is a public hearing, and now is your chance. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public portion and bring it back to the commission. Who would like to lead off?
I don't see any problem with this. As the staff has asked its approval, I, I would accept the staff's, staff's recommendation, and I think it's a good project. I'd like to see the tree kept until there's a real problem with it. I think it's a substantial tree, and I would favor the staff recommendation.
So I'm, I hate to, hate to, hate big trees, but redwood trees, in my mind, don't belong in a residential area. They're, they're nasty, they get way too big, there's not enough to keep them alive in the long run. I live close to one now that is, there's no way we're ever gonna be able to take it out, but when we have a big storm, it throws huge limbs at my windows. I always fear that it's gonna crash into the house as soon as it runs out of, you know, space to grow, and it worries me. When I look at the plan and I see these two trees that, and where they would be, I think that if they're big enough and native, like oak trees, they could be beautiful in the long run, and much better for not only this property, but the surrounding properties in the long run. So I would, I would be more in favor of taking out the redwood, putting in the sidewalks, if you gotta put in sidewalks, or putting in sidewalks when the whole street puts in sidewalks, and it can actually be, you know, useful. And having two trees grow up and, and look better than the redwood tree.
Okay, good.
I tend to agree with that. I mean, I think the benefits of sidewalk, of two native trees outweigh the fact, I mean, we don't, people hate to lose a redwood tree, but they really, this isn't the ideal setting for a redwood tree, in my view.
Any other comments? I have a question regarding the, the way the accessory building, the garage, and the recreation room is plumbed. Is that going to be plumbed so it can easily be converted into a residential unit? Do we know? Or maybe Richard?
My personal plan, my plan is just, it's a personal day spa. It's a personal gym.
Dave, can you identify yourself, please?
My name's David Bianco, and I'm the owner of the property. And the purpose of this was to generate a giant playroom. If, what would, what I want in the future? I don't know, but it's just gonna be a playroom. I don't know what it'll be 40 years from now.
But will it be, will it be plumbed?
Oh, I'm gonna have plumbing in it, yes. I've got a shower and toilets and a sink, obviously a wine bar. Short of that, there's no other plans for it.
As I understand the regulations, if it were to become a habitable unit, it would have to go back through the use permit process to make that a legal change. It's that, it could be done, but it takes coming back to the planning department.
Always worries me when they're plumbed for residential uses and they're supposed to be something else, and then that conversion takes place, and we don't find out till a long time after.
The idea that somebody might be living there someday isn't totally out of the question.
Yeah.
What I was just gonna mention was, as, as Mr. Emi mentioned, was that if they wanted to convert it into a secondary dwelling unit, they would need to go through a process to get that approved. They would need to, you know, go through the process with SoCal Creek to have a separate meter and do all of that at that time. Right now, and I had, I had them note that on the plans, is that it's currently a wet bar, and in our zoning code, there is a definition, or, it definitely explains the difference between a kitchen and a wet bar, and it's based on several factors. So it's been noted as a wet bar, but in the future, if they did want to go through that process, they could convert it into a secondary dwelling unit. They certainly have a large enough lot, parking, all those things, if they wanted to do it.
Okay. Any other comments? So we get down to the tree issue.
Well, I just can't, I just can't let the tree issue go, because, because I would just have another couple comments to make about it, and that is, and I'm, I'm happy to lose this one, but I think we have a tree ordinance in place that's pretty well spelled out, when you can take, why you can take out a tree, when you can take out a tree. And I'm not so sure we're at that point with this tree. And I think we are going to move into some uncharted territory if we start taking out trees, anticipating that there might be problems. I think when we're supposed to take out trees, as per our current ordinance, is when there is a significant problem. I think eventually this tree will be taken out, eventually two other trees will be replaced, and they'll be probably more appropriate. But I still think, if we're gonna follow our ordinance now, we, we don't have grounds to take this tree out right now.
I think the tree may survive, because I agree in with you. So that creates a two-to-two deadlock up here. So would someone like to attempt a motion, and we'll see where we can go?
Well, I'll attempt one. I move to approve the-
Well, they'll have to-
-application with the existing conditions.
Is there a second? The chair will second. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
I'm gonna vote for it. I think it's better just to get the project moving along here.
Okay. And opposed?
If it's a big issue, we can appeal it.
I'm still gonna be opposed, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the motion carries three to one. Good luck, Mr. Biancolana. Okay, our next public hearing then is for a design approval and sign approval for an existing motel, currently called the Harbor Lights Motel in the CV Zone. The staff presentation, please.
Yes, so the applicant is proposing exterior improvements to an existing motel, currently the Harbor Lights Motel, 5,000 Cliff Drive and CV zoning. Familiar with the motel? It's a 10-room motel located at the intersection of Warf Road and Cliff Drive. Here's a little look from aerial. Here's another, another view here. And here's a street view, kind of looking from the intersection, looking up Cliff Drive. And here is a site plan. So it, the motel is recently under new ownership. The applicants are proposing exterior improvements to the motel in order to update the building, provide some new amenities, including an elevator and outdoor deck. The improvements include a list of things, two new wall signs, the addition of a new wall, new wall columns along the north, Cliff Drive elevation, a new elevator, replacement of the fire escape with a new stairway, new ADA accessible landing ramp and stairs onto Cliff Drive, a new outdoor deck with a fireplace, bench seats, guardrails, and planters, new landscaping, and new paint, including a potential mural on the north elevation. So here's a look at the floor plan for the roof deck. Have a fireplace and some seating. Here's a look at the Cliff Drive elevation. So currently, these columns do not exist, so these are new kind of architectural columns here. This currently is just a roof right here, so they're adding the elevator shaft. And then here is where the new deck is gonna be proposed. Sign- And then here is where the new deck is going to be proposed, signage. There's the old fire escape that's here, and they're proposing a new, more usable stairway here at the corner. And then this is the area where they're talking about possibly doing a mural, so... And here is the other side of the building, looking from the Warf Road or looking from the beach. Not a lot of changes here, stairway, elevator shaft, and then basically the railing, it's a glass railing for the deck. Here's a look just from the south elevation and from north elevation. So as I mentioned, there are two signs being proposed. It's on a corner, so they're allowed to have... Per sign ordinance, they're allowed to have two signs. One is kind of similar to where the sign is now. It's kind of on the end, kind of facing the village. And then the other is facing lower on the building and facing Cliff Drive. So staff is recommending approval based on the conditions and findings provided, and available for any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I do.
Ed?
So I had some trouble understanding the landscape plan, and...
Okay.
I mean, I see the specimens that are being proposed, there isn't any symbol or key that I can use to get me to where those...
It's on the second page of the attached...
Oh, okay. There you go. Okay, but so... But I... What I need help with is seeing where these plants are on the... I mean, there's still isn't any...
There's a couple of queen palms proposed.
Where are they?
Here, let's see here. Let's get this up. So we have two queen palms in these... So basically, between the sidewalk and the building, and maybe we should look... Take a look. You can kind of see there's a small sliver of landscape, it's kind of hard to see on this, actually, between the sidewalk and the building that goes the whole length of the building. So it's a little... It's getting... At the Architectural Site Review Committee, we talked about it and determined that, you know, this really needs to be taken out and some new landscaping put in. So that's... There's a couple of queen palms that are being proposed along here, as well as some lavender, wild lilac, verbane.
I walk that sidewalk all the time. I can't imagine a queen palm sitting there and still having a sidewalk.
But that's what they were proposing.
I... Okay.
Maybe about this big around. Any other questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant present?
Good evening. I'm Steve Elmore, architect and representative for the applicant. And I think I can address some of the questions you have. Commissioner Newman, the queen palm, we've got about 2'9" at the places where the palms are meant to be. They're the oblong things that Ryan pointed out on the each side of the... Yeah. Of the big blank wall that you see right now, which is where we're going to be putting this sign and then a mural future above. And then the shrubs, I didn't indicate them specifically, but those are the series of shrubs we were thinking, those species, you know, the wild lilac. Xeonothus is something you can kind of shape going... Excuse me. Going one direction to keep it linear away from the sidewalk. And then the queen palms, if, you know, in 40 years, they might have to replace that queen palm with... If it gets too big, but, you know, they stay about this big around for a long time. And the one thing about queen palms is they have a small root ball, and you can throw them down on the ground, and they're very easily transported. The fact that if it does outgrow the sidewalk in time, he can sell it, gets some money for it and put in a smaller one, is what we were talking about. But there's about this much room between the sidewalk and the building at that place. And at the other end, there's a little bit more. And so the palm would be, you know, about this big when it gets mature, but when, you know, the ones we get that are about 20 feet tall are about this big around, so... That's something we could... I wouldn't mind seeing as a condition if it does anything to the sidewalk. I don't think it will. Queen palms have small roots that go down and they don't go out. Let's see, I'm going to go back now to some items in Ryan's presentation. The new owners bought this, I guess, a little more than a year and a half ago, and the... One of the... Actually, the building official suggested that we might consider putting a roof deck on the current roof right now because it's a neat spot to look out at the ocean. And the owners wanted to put in an elevator to make it more ADA accessible and to help people get their luggage up from the lower floor. The basement is where you arrive, or the lower floor is where the parking is, so there's three floors above it. So it's going to be a good thing to put in an elevator, ADA, the new size with the gurney. And then the roof deck around it has got a solid planter-style handrail-facing Cliff Drive, so people won't be luring, you know, down on the street. So the planter is 30 inches wide, and so people up in the upper deck would be set back from the street, you know, 30 inches. Then on the ocean side, you know, it'd be on the upper part of that slide there, yeah, right there. And wrapping it around the corner slightly, too. And then into a kind of a solid wall that goes up seven or eight feet in favor of the neighbor, so nobody's glaring into his front door, really. He doesn't have a lot of windows along that side until you get down toward the end where the windows are actually higher in his front room, I guess.
The wall's only halfway, though, right?
Yeah.
Doesn't extend all the way to the end of the deck.
No, because after that wall stops, you know, you can see that's... This is... We'd be looking from the neighbor to the west, and it stops right there where Ryan had the clicker. And then that goes down as a solid wall handrail to the end where it turns into a glass handrail, tempered glass handrail to look out at the ocean. But from the point where it drops down, his... He doesn't have any windows except the high windows. And so I think we're good from not, you know, laring into his, you know, building. Let's see. We're doing the new trimmer on the top to kind of help the... This is sort of a late 50s kind of design, even though it was done in the '64, doing some little articulation on the top. And as far as the old fire escape, the... Spent a lot of time with the building official on this, and the code on fire escapes is the... If they are usable, they are permitted to be retained. You can't do new fire escapes, but if a current fire escape is in bad, bad condition, you cannot replace it. So we have to put in the new stair. And it's really tight, but we figured it out in a sort of that triangular area. And then it drops down. We're actually shortening up the office right now in that little triangular section where Brian's pointing. And then we're bringing the stair out toward the sidewalk, and I worked it out with Steve Jesburg. So we come down, and the last three or four steps are down to the city curb right there. So going around to the front again on Cliff Drive, these... I call these things, instead of columns, I call them walls, but it's... Because they're sort of wide, but we're trying to... If you walk up there, my parents stayed here a few times, and when you walk down those hallways, man, you're just like out there in the world, and, you know, the street's right there and a little bit of vertigo, and your doors are opening just right to everybody going up and down. So we decided to put these walls to sort of in front of the doors, so you don't feel so open to the world when you're coming in your motel room. And then the little steps from the entrance, which is the lower one on the right, we'd still have a gate like there is now, but we would have a ramp going to up the hill, a little landing, and then two steps going down the hill. So we made the ADA access there. Yeah, I don't know if you can see that right there, but that's the clicker right there where it's showing. If I wanted to pass around these, if I could?
Do we have that? Excuse me. We already have that.
Oh, you do, you do.
Yeah. I think this is a better... Better, if you could just pass it on, it's up.
I think we do have it on the face. The one that was in the staff report was a little orangier.
Yeah.
This is similar.
Oh, you got the real one?
We have a really good one.
Okay, that's what I was after.
Yeah, that's great that that was provided because the other colors left a little out there.
Yeah. Well, it's meant to be sort of a light terracotta. It came out a little dark in this xeroxed, so... Oh, did you get the photograph of the dolphin sculpture?
No, I didn't actually, but in thinking about it and discussing it with Steve, I think it's actually something we'll look at as far as meeting the art requirement. So just to give you a little background, there was... If you look on the site plan in this location, this is actually in the city right of way. There's a planter. Well, you can actually have a... Kind of get this planner that's here right now. They're proposing a, I guess, kind of a dolphin statue type of a piece of art, and we're not looking at approving that here. It's actually something that we'll go through our Art and Cultural Commission. As... In our zoning code, or in our municipal code, I should say, whenever you have any type of commercial project that has over $250,000 worth of improvements, which this will, they're required to meet our art ordinance. And so there's in lieu fees, or you can provide art on the site or near the site, and it goes through a process through our Art and Cultural Commission. So that's something that we'll be doing after this portion of the... Assuming it gets approved.
So is it the dolphin or a mural, or is it both?
It's a sculpture.
Yeah, it's based on a certain percentage of cost of the improvements. So, you know, the Art and Cultural Commission will consider, you know, whether it be, you know, whatever parts... Whatever the art is, they'll look at the value of it and base it on that.
The owners should be aware that the last time we had art sculpture like that in the village, it lasted less than a year.
Yeah. We spoke about that, the one that got stolen, yeah. Well, we were planning on putting this on a heavy concrete with big old light pole-sized bolts. It's up... It's about this tall, and I've seen it. It's a beautiful, solid bronze sculpture of dolphins, sort of four of them, sort of going up like that. It's about that tall, about this big around. It's really nice.
And is this a piece of artwork that is only one has been made of? Is it's...
Yeah.
Because that's part of our ordinance as well. It has to be... It can't be something that has been made as part of a series, you know, as part of many of them, like, you know, like weather vanes. You'll see an artist make, you know, make them all the time.
It's an original.
It's only one of a kind.
Yeah.
Great.
They have another similar piece they want to put up on the roof patio. And then if you are interested, I have a preliminary sketch of the mural. I don't know if this is the appropriate venue.
Maybe the Arts and Cultural Commission...
Yeah, I wouldn't say that any art portion will probably be...
See it, you're welcome to. I'd love to see it.
Want to see it? Okay.
While you're doing that, did you say the building was originally built in 1964?
Yes.
What was there before that? Does anyone remember?
I don't want to get remember something like that. I know it was across the street, but I don't know this one.
Yeah, it was an auto body shop across the street.
All right, this is a preliminary mural. And this is the big...
Might want to take it up to them as part of the...
That's hard to see.
This is preliminary, but there's one thing. So this is the big end of the building, the big blank wall, two more cultures. This is just a view of the village, similar to what's here. But done a little bit in the style of the mural under the...
Trestle.
Shows the village, shows the lagoon, shows the bay and the coastline in the background. We're not going to have this mermaid like that. We're going to have her moved over and sort of facing inward. Because that's more of a traditional building. You usually see a mermaid's full face, you see the side, and the tail sort of coming down. We've got some electrical channels over here, turn this down.
That's very, very nice.
Yeah, I like that.
So it would be painted, not mosaic'd, or it would be paint?
Paint, yeah.
Have any other questions?
How... Just a curiosity for the mural, how far up would it start? Would it be like above the first floor?
Ryan, do you have that slide on the north elevation? It sort of shows it diagrammed in.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you see the outline, the rectangle?
Hard to get out with the...
And you see those electrical meters there? The tail will be sort of hanging down to help disguise them, so...
And these are halo-lit signs. They're not...
Correct.
They're not canned signs, they're halo-lit.
Yeah.
Right.
With LED, you know, backlit and blue and light blue are the colors.
Metal?
Metal.
Or the lighting?
Painted metal, and then they're backlit, so the light goes against the wall and just glows, the halo.
Great.
So one other question. And I just want to be sure, on the front, the accessible ramp and the landing, did you say it's behind the gate, so it's not into the sidewalk, it's behind the gate?
Well, it's... Yeah, it's behind the gate. It's more of a handrail at that point, because we don't want somebody just go walking straight out into the street.
Right.
If they're coming out from the elevator, you know, like going that way on the plan, you know, there'd be a handrail just like this. Then they would go down two steps or ramp up, very short distance because the walk is coming up. So we maintain our separation from the street and get our ADA access, and then you can go either direction.
Okay, so it's not into the sidewalk at all? The sidewalk remains perfect?
Yes, Steve, this is probably one of the biggest projects that's occurred in the village in a long time, and I'm wondering if you've given any thought as to how the construction's going to be staged, because it probably won't take place until the spring, if that early. And that's a heavily trafficked sidewalk going down to the beach, and also that lane of traffic coming down Cliff Drive there. It appears from the overall scope of this construction, there's going to have to be some major blockage of sidewalks and even perhaps a lane of traffic at times, and I'm wondering how you intend to deal with it.
I'm not so worried about the actual construction of the building, I'm more worried about the mural for that, because we're going to have to have some kind of scaffold. But we got just under three feet, like 2'9", right in front of the mural, and then at the other end, it's 3'1", I think. But building the walls, I think we're going to be okay, because the walls will only stick out from the building eight inches. No, six inches. And so I think we're going to be okay. I mean, they're... The guys building it might be walking up and down the sidewalk, but we can actually put a screen up right there at the sidewalk edge, so they're working in a space that's only this wide. And that's fine, because the wall is only this wide going up. As far as the elevator, it would be coming in through the bottom, and the car is assembled on the job site, so it would be built up from the bottom out, so... And in terms of materials, you know, we have a new roof load on the roof deck for people, live load, so we can store materials up on the roof deck. So there might be a truck that comes with a crane that delivers to put something on the roof deck, but we may have to coordinate that with the city and, I guess, Steve Jesburg and Mark Wheeler about that.
If the sidewalk were encroached upon and blocked off, it'd create some real safety hazards down there. If the lane was blocked off, it would be a traffic nightmare.
I know. I think we can do it without blocking the sidewalk, really.
Okay.
Probably a lot of the construction trucks and materials can probably be parked underneath in the existing...
Come around the bottom.
In the existing office, probably, is my guess.
Yeah, because, and I think they're planning on doing the construction in the late winter, because spring is when things start happening, you know. So they have to time it with the weather.
Okay, any other questions? Nope? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on the item?
Hi, my name's David Nowak, and we are with the Capital Venetian Hotel across the street from this project, and I'd like to say I'd... And I'd like to say I think this is a great project for them to do. Any improvements to the look of the buildings down in the village, I think is beneficial for everyone. I would just like to ask that there's some sort of conditions put on as far as hours of condition, or hours of construction. Because we also have the Rio Sands Motel over in Aptos. And right now, there's a construction project going across the street. They work from 7:00 AM to 9:30 PM, seven days a week, whenever they feel like it. And it's detrimental to our business. I'm very supportive of them making improvements to theirs. I just don't want it to have negative impact on ours.
There is a condition proposed for, to limit construction Monday to Friday, 7:30 to 9:00 PM, and Saturdays, 9:00 to 4:00 PM.
Till 9:00 PM, you're saying? Because, I mean, not only for our customers, for those people who live there in the courts and around. I think that's a little late, really, to be listening to skill saws and hammers and, you know, when we did our, we did a million and a half dollar improvement to Rio Sands, and we were restricted to 8:30 to 5:30 Monday through Friday. And we found that very workable. And I don't think that it's unreasonable to ask for the same sort of conditions on this project. Especially on the weekends, as has been noticed. It's very popular, people coming to visit our town, and the sidewalk gets busy, parking along those spots. They're going out to the wharf. It's just going to be a real conflict with construction vehicles coming and going and everything. If the motel is still in operation, when this is going on, there's going to be very limited parking underneath, because that's where the customers park, is underneath on that ground floor. So, I would just ask that there's some sort of conditions that kind of reduce those hours, so it's not impacting the rest of us negatively.
It's 9:00 to 4:00 on Saturday and not at all on Sunday. Did you understand that?
Yeah, I thought somebody said something about up till 9:00 PM. I guess I misunderstood.
Right now, that's Monday to Friday, the conditions.
Right, yeah, exactly. I just think that's kind of unreasonable personally, to have to listen to that sort of noise out late in the day for people, those that live there, coming home from work and whatever. So, yeah, for us as a business owner, it's easy to explain to people, well, yeah, this is things that go on during the day, normal business world. People are used to a nine-to-five business world. But it's, I'm afraid it's going to have negative impact on us. It's going to cost us money, people getting upset and wanting to leave, because they don't want to hear construction that late in the evening, so. But that set aside, I think it's a great project. I think it should be approved.
Just in speaking with the applicant briefly, they have no problem with reducing the hours Monday through Friday to, you know, instead of 9:00 PM to six or seven or something like that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak on this item? See no one, then we'll close the public portion, bring it back to the commission. Who would like to lead off? Ed?
Okay, well, first, I'm really surprised that a building less than 50 years old is this tired and in need of a renovation. You'd think it would be like 150 years old, but this is, there's a lot of creativity in this design. I think it's, I mean, not only is it a much-needed improvement and something I would probably support anyway, but there's, I mean, I really am impressed with the creative ideas that have been implemented here in this plan. I'm skeptical of the landscaping, but I'll hope to be proven wrong.
That's all.
Well, I just applaud the fact that you're thinking of putting a mural on there, because that big blank wall is sort of barren, and you're in such a prominent place in the village that I think some kind of artwork or some kind of articulation on that building is desperately needed. So, I applaud the thought of a mural. And being that high as a painted mural, it's going to be less accessible to any kind of graffiti anyway, but hopefully, there'll be some kind of graffiti coating on it. So, if they do come along, you can get it off without, you know, obliterating what's already up there. The working hours, we've heard that on several different projects lately. And I don't know if we want to really look at our code and the allowance of 7:30 to 9 o'clock and look at pulling that back down. Because I agree, if you're in a residential zone or in a commercial visitor-serving zone, working till 9 o'clock can be very, very detrimental during the week. So, I don't know if we can go back and look at that. But I know we've commented up here on many occasions about making exceptions and issuing conditions that are not what our code says. But it seems to be a problem pretty much across the board. So, those are my comments.
I agree with the other commissioners' comments. I think it's a terrific project, and I really appreciate the attention to a smaller signage placed fairly low. I think it's really tasteful, and it's going to really look good in a very prominent location in Capitola. So, I know we all appreciate the details that have gone into this. It looks really nice. And I agree with Linda about the, I don't know when we changed that. It seems to me, when I was on the Planning Commission and the council before, we went to 5:30, 6 o'clock at night with construction. And when did that change? It's, when did it go to 9:00?
Well, we can look it up, but that's what it is in the ordinance right now.
It seems like to me, too. I don't know, I mean.
But before we do anything, I mean, this is fine, because the applicant's consented, but, I mean, we should hear from the interested parties and groups that are involved.
We can't change it.
Before we make any recommendations on this, I don't think we have enough information.
Yeah, no, I don't think we're talking about changing any ordinances tonight. I think we're just commenting on it.
Talking about what our new ordinance is may include.
Something to think about, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm just recommending that we take a look at whether or not 9:00 is appropriate and pulling it in. I'm not suggesting a separate time even, but I'm just, it's uncomfortable saying, you know, we're okay with doing it if we change the rules for this application. And we've done that a couple of times, and I'm just, think, well, look at it.
My recollection, I know Daniel Costelec worked on changing the construction hours. I'm guessing it was at least four or five more years ago when they revised it. It might say, actually, in the zoning code for the revision. But my thought is that the reason why maybe it goes to 9:00 is, you know, for kind of Joe Citizen comes home from work, wants to work on his house, do something like that. You know, most professional contractors are working from, you know, 7:30 to 4:30 generally, you know, so most aren't working till 9 o'clock. But the whole point of, you know, of the approval is in having that in there. This is straight out of the code, but, you know, on a project-by-project basis, when you have concerns, you can address them by modifying the construction hours, if you please.
Any other comments? I have a couple items to discuss. And I personally'd like to see a condition applied that would limit the time that if the sidewalk were necessary to block off, or a lane was necessary to be closed to deliver things, that there be a time limit on that, and it be restricted to morning hours, perhaps before 10 o'clock, or, you know, when traffic is mild. Because, I know, even Mr. Elmore said it probably won't be a problem. The contractor may come out there, and they may want to park their trucks on the sidewalk to have access, to have their tools close at hand, and.
No blocking of the sidewalk after 10 o'clock, and they would have to get an encroachment permit as well.
Right.
I think the better way to do that is to say no blocking of the sidewalk without getting the staff approval on a case-by-case basis, yeah, temporary basis.
Okay, that'd be good.
Director.
Sidewalk and street?
And street.
Sidewalk and street. No blocking of the sidewalk and street.
Okay.
Yeah, correct.
Another concern I had is on the deck. I like the parapet wall that runs down halfway, but my concern would be, that's only maybe five or six feet from the neighbor's house, and so that window's way up high. But I can see that deck being used for small wedding receptions and things, possibly. And the noise that could come off of that deck into the neighbor's house kind of concerns me, so. I just wondered if it's feasible to run that parapet wall down to near the corner. Mr. Elmore? What do you think?
Well, that's something we were thinking about. There's a nice view out there to the right as you're standing there. But we could do, as you're saying, run it near the corner and maybe wave it down or something to the handrail height. In other words, you know, back toward Cliff Drive, the thing is like this high, and the handrails are this high. We could.
Just kind of slope it down.
Slope it down or wave it down or something, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if it's a valid concern or not, but it seems the potential is there.
So, we had some hours. Would you like to reduce the hours? Because we have a, that they can be using the deck up till 11 o'clock at night, perhaps.
I don't have a problem with the hours. Do you guys have any problem with the hours?
Is there a way we can build in, you know, some kind of a review or a possibility of a review of the use of that deck if there are complaints? You know, I don't have any problem with it now, but what if there was a problem and we hadn't built in some type of a review process and didn't keep that door open for ourselves and the residents that live around there?
Can we add to that condition?
Yeah, you can add that the deck can be reviewed upon complaint by the Planning Commission. Deck use can be reviewed.
Yeah, that would be satisfactory, sure.
Okay.
Just add that to number three?
I think the owners would be happy with that, because they are concerned about that as well.
Okay.
Okay.
And my last one is just a personal one. The Harbor Lights has been the name for almost 50 years, and I hate to see it changed. It's too bad they wouldn't consider incorporating the Harbor Lights name into their, into the Capitola Beach Suites some way. Harbor Lights Capitola Beach Suites or something. Just, it's almost part of the history of the town, how it's been there for so long, so.
But the neat thing is, you now know it's suites. I mean, I never knew that they all had kitchens. I had never been into any of them, and I had no idea they were actually suites. So, it's kind of nice to know. We've got that.
There's no inclination to convert this to residential units later on? Is there like the one, what was it called? Frank Anderson used to own down there on the Esplanade?
That's right.
Right.
No, there's not. And they were considering.
And they would have to go through a condominium conversion ordinance process.
They were considering keeping the name, but the thing is, there's no harbor, really. I mean, it's, you got moorings, but, you know, it's not really a harbor, so. And being a sailor, I've kind of wondered about that, my, too. But I really liked the name Harbor Lights, but they want to go with that beach suites. And they really are suites. I mean, they're pretty basic, but they're pretty cool, really, yeah.
Well, not long after the time that was built, there was an idea that was floated to build a jetty that went all the way out and came across to create a harbor in there.
Yeah.
That lasted a long time, right?
That was a long time. Okay, no other comments? Back to the commission for some action.
So, I'll move approval. The conditions are going to be a little difficult here. You'll have to help me on this. So, we have the staff conditions, all of which seem fine. We have some additional conditions, and do you want to try to formulate those?
Related to the deck, use of the deck, complaint, if we receive complaints on the deck, it can come back and the hours can be reconsidered by the Planning Commission.
Construction hours be reduced, the condition be changed to six on weekdays instead of nine. And the, no blockage of the sidewalk or the street without prior approval of the staff.
Okay.
And receiving an encroachment permit from the Public Works Director.
Everybody good with those?
And then, number six, I would like it just to be a little bit more specific about irrigation system being required. It's a little oblique, the way it's written now. Doesn't need to have a big change. And then, also, number eight seemed a little like, see, funding public art for non-residential. So, it gives one way they can go about it, but it doesn't really say, "Or install public art." So, I would just like that added as well, just both options.
Well, it's basically comply with chapter 2.58, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at, was just need to comply with the art ordinance. Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, all good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion?
I made my motion already, so.
I'll second it.
At least a little rough, yeah. Okay, we have a motion and a second with the conditions as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next public hearing is an amendment to the Capitola Municipal Code, section 1036055, regarding parking meter zone rates.
Right.
Susan?
And normally, you know, the Planning.
Thank you, Mr. Elmore.
The Planning Commission only gets involved in zoning ordinance amendments. But this amendment is going to be an amendment to our local coastal plan, because for some reason, in 2006, the city put in its local coastal plan a program that set parking meter rates, hours, and zones. So, now, if the city wants to make any modification to that, we have to go through a whole coastal land use plan amendment to be able to do that. So, we've been working with the Coastal Commission staff, and they agree that the appropriate thing is for these changes to be done with the city issuing itself a coastal permit. And those coastal permits are appealable to the Coastal Commission if they feel the city does something that would severely limit public access to the beach, like starting to charge $50 an hour for parking meters or something outrageous like that. So, this comes to you, you make a recommendation, and it will go to the city council. The one thing I would like to point out is that meter rate changes will go directly to the city council, not be coming to the Planning Commission.
I move that we recommend approval to the city council.
Hey, we have to have a public hearing on it.
No, there's nobody here.
See, no one will bring it back for the vote.
Public hearing.
We have to open and close it. Okay, we've opened it and closed it. Is there a second? Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, any reports from the commissioners?
Oh, good. Pictures.
I have a couple of things.
Okay.
The first is, I handed you a drawing to let you know that the Arts Commission is going to be going to the city council to ask them to approve an art project that will basically be a kiosk down in the village area approximately at the location that's shown here. If the city council is in favor of this, they will go out and hire an artist who will do an actual design of what the kiosk is going to look like. Once we have the design, the design itself will come to the Planning Commission for approval as it is a sign being located down there.
So, this isn't the design?
That isn't the design.
Thank God.
But, but there was some concern that you might be confused if the city council suddenly started hiring someone to design a sign going down in the village. Why hadn't it come to the Planning Commission? So, we just wanted to make certain that you understood it will be coming to you, and that's what the process is going to be. No one wanted to hurt your feelings. I also wanted to let you know that the sidewalk signs are going to the Coastal Commission, and they will be considering it at their meeting in November. And once those are approved, staff plans to take to the city council their first meeting in December, a plan for implementing how people apply for the new signs and to tell them how we are going to do code enforcement now that there is the opportunity for someone to apply for the sidewalk signs. The other item I wanted to mention is, you may have noticed, if you got an actual paper packet, there's a new way, and Danielle can help me with this. Items are listed up here, because the city has gone to a new minute recording system where there is a videotape recording of the meetings. Those videotape recordings are searchable. There will be no more minutes of the city council meetings. It will all be done digitally. And we are, we're moving in that direction as far as the Planning Commission is concerned, too.
So, it'll, it's a video recording instead of having minutes?
Correct.
But you can search it based on any one of these search words? Based on amendment, or rate, or meter, or?
So, they've enacted it at the city council level, and, you know, they're going through a test. And if it works, then we will be coming to the Planning Commission.
So, when it comes to approving the minutes on the agendas, how is that done? Do you just actually accept the video recording?
Well, basically, all you're going to have are action minutes to approve. You won't have the traditional minutes, you know, that Pam used to type. Yeah, there won't be, you could correct if they got the vote wrong, but there won't be sort of the record that you're accustomed to or. but there won't be sort of the record that you're accustomed to, or?
So what's Danielle going to do?
She's going to get Thursday nights off.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that takes care.
Any reports from the commissioners?
No.
None?
If not, then the meeting is adjourned.
Wow, you should do this more often.
I could say that the meeting went a lot faster.
Yeah.
And you can figure out why.
So I think that you might want to pay attention to the council in their December meeting, because I think they're going to be deciding what they're going to do with their community development.
Oh, no.
And what are the options?
Well, I think some of it depends on what happens with Measure O.
Uh-huh, and, but what would the, I mean, are they thinking about getting rid of it, or?
No, if Measure O happens, if Measure O happens, they'll look to hiring a new community development director. If Measure O doesn't pass, then.